We plan for a lead on block. They're playing something that's been recreated every year.
Yeah.
Besides the team.
It'll be. I'm not sure what you mean. Those are two things that they're involved in. Yeah. I mean, it's expensive. I'm just a wheel call guy. They don't talk long about it. They're like, hey, it's nice.
No, absolutely. They'll. Besides that, you know. I think it's. I think it's all. Yeah. Tara?
They'll have such a house as us.
Yes.
But it's not a break. We don't. We don't got a closet.
It's going to be fun down there because they got the tournament over the weekend. But they died. Exciting. See how this is going to work out. Yeah, they had that. They called me down there. They were like, why didn't you invite me down there? And they aggressed, they aggressed. You know, I just go.
That's also one of the things.
Two.
This stuff. That's something.
I do so. You know. You know. I don't really.
Well, we started on the I C A project. We don't. Perhaps. As soon as we're starting, we'll start on this one. So that's why we have a little session tonight to test our.
That. That's just.
Yeah. From now on.
I was in the middle of where.
So why did you get in today? They've all you have to say. They're going to put a camera through. And it's crazy to raise your hair. And then tie it.
Exactly.
Over and then.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But it didn't work.
Okay. Great. I'm hoping.
They will fix my door the first time.
No, those are the water lines. Then we'll fix it.
No, but I told you.
We'll fix your water lines. I'd like a little distribution and we will fix everyone's problems.
The late teen.
Yes. 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 Also, I need very much to go on a run. Very excited to get rid of that crap. Yes, eight thousand twenty dollars.
I don't want to hear about that. I just try to get home. It's a big deal.
Yes, it is.
Marty always tells me what it's.
It is all very good. It's part of the project.
I do.
Well.
We don't. Bridge. Throw dogs in the bridge. They made the rules.
You want to go?
No, I got it.
Oh, this thing.
Yes, very.
I don't.
Hello, Robert.
Good.
Everybody at seven o'clock. Call me either.
Three, four.
Stand for the pledge, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so now we're going to do a roll call. Jay, thank you. Thank you. Butler?
Here.
Jordan? Lipscomb?
Here.
Hoobridge?
Here.
Smith? Thrasch?
Here.
Vincento?
Here.
I've numbered present two apps. Okay, we had a couple council members that had called off, so that's excused access. I bless you and our legal count law director and finance director also won't be joining us tonight. So having said that, will any questions on that? Donnie? Okay, so we're going to do the minutes. Everybody get the minutes?
Okay.
Okay, if we're good, we don't. J C, make a motion.
Yep.
Okay, Tara second it. You're going to do your thing now. Go ahead. Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hoobridge?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
All members here. Yeah, and just for, you know, as good an order, like it's present for a time, you still get the vote, so. So it says new business, but it's really kind of old business because we talked about this before. The letter that we got last council meeting about permission to the five K walk. Remember that? And then we asked for some further information, like for these guys' residents. And the answer to that question is yes. So I think that was the only thing that we wanted people.
No, it was whether they resonated, cars be repaired on Sunset and be removed for race, donating map, donating time for traffic control, who else is on duty to possibly help, and a number of volunteers for the other side streets. The update that I have from chief, working with chief and this gentleman, they are both residents of the city. We can leave Zach Williams, we weren't sure of. There is Zach Williams in town. There are nine total volunteers. They are hoping to have about fifteen going forward. Chief said he's going to donate his time. There will be two other officers on duty, but if there is a call, we would have to respond to the call and go through it. So I think that's everything else. The other thing we've worked with them is suggested that part of the route that they're proposing is they use the sidewalk and the bike lane down on Woodrow, and that would allow us not to have to need as many volunteers blocking traffic down that street.
Thank you, Jim.
And the, I don't know about the cars on Sunset. That was Christie's question. That was usually there's a letter sent out to ask them to move, but I don't know if it's up in council if they're going to make a move. I don't know.
Yeah, typically we put out a request that they move, but we've never told somebody if they hadn't.
Okay, they banged on doors at six A M., but.
Yeah.
We could tell them not to do that.
Well, I don't. I obeyed the request, but I'm just.
That's the only question I didn't get answered.
Okay. I don't have a fine.
Kind of an answer, but not.
So are there, is there any discussion about this? Do we want to say anything specifically about the removing of cars? We're going to leave that up to the police department? How do we want to do that? Can I ask Matt a question?
Sure.
Do you believe it's necessary for cars to be cleared for that type of a race?
It's, like I said, it's not a hundred percent necessary. It's nice if they remove them. It just gives everybody a lot more path to travel.
But some of those houses don't have a lot of parking.
Right, yeah. If they don't, if they don't move, we're not going to call it.
Okay.
But we'll still probably request that they do.
Okay. Matt, how do we report? Would we send a letter?
We send flyer, we put flyers out and then let them know.
Okay. Other questions? So to proceed if we want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion?
Somebody make a motion.
Does anybody want to make a motion? J C here, do you have a question or are you going to make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a second. Tara? Do you want to do that vote? I know.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Hoobridge?
Yes.
Thrasch?
Yes.
Vincento?
Yes.
All members here. Great, great. And you, who's communicating with this gentleman?
Chief has been emotionally, but.
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And, you know, we just want to make sure that they understand it was never like we didn't support the activity. It's just wanted a little bit more information.
Yeah.
Okay, so no citizens' hearings, no correspondence that I'm aware of. So now we get to the reports. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Beth. Today, Jan Fitt, we please remember our veterans tomorrow is D day and a big turning point in World War II. So please remember to say a thank you prayer for those brave men who gave their lives for them. I met with Jerry Moore, one of the officers of the N double A C P regarding an invitation to an upcoming steak fry in June, and I apologize, I don't have that date with hands toward the end of June. So, but I plan on attending. Met with Jeremy, H A Smith, and Dustin Hall regarding G I S G P S mapping in the city and the water project. Jeremy and I did a Zoom meeting with David Perigis, I think was his name, regarding some additional state funding. I'd like to thank Michael Shaheen for facilitating that meeting. Spent two days with the federal and state EPA on their visit. We spent time discussing the Dorothy tank, the two water tanks. We do use the water plant, the reservoir, and I have to say, I was very proud of Jeremy Greenwood, the water and sewer employees, which spent two weeks prior to collate, to that meeting, collating all the information which the federal EPA requested, as well as answering all of their questions when they arrived. I was really impressed. We ended their visit with a debriefing meeting upstairs, and their findings were fairly minor. But I did tell them that as mayor of the city, if they come to me with a problem, I expect them to come with a probable solution, and that would include a buck and a money. And I don't know if anybody's ever asked them that before, but I said, that's, that's what I would expect. If you had a problem, then help me with the solution. But we have yet to get that report. That'll come one in three, three months?
They said a hundred and twenty days from now.
Okay. Friday, May nineteenth at Central Park, we saw the celebration of Arbor Day and the representative from O D N R, Ann Bonner was here to watch the planting of the red oak tree close to the amphitheater. Like to thank Eric Gay and Jen Johnson, who's a representative of the rec department, for throwing the first shovel fulls of dirt on the new trade. Thanks to Jeremy, we were given a hundred free trees of various indigenous species to plant in our city, and I think those are already planted. And I was honored to be asked to speak to St. Clairsville back laryon on Sunday, May twenty first. Congratulations and good luck to that graduating class of two thousand twenty-three. I had a meeting on May twenty-fourth with the attorney general's representative, Danielle Mason and Chief Arbens. We were on a Zoom call. She had previously brought a program to us on behalf of the attorney general's office regarding law enforcement awareness when dealing with veterans. She returned on the twenty-fourth. The C of chief had decided to institute this program, and I've got to tell you, Ms. Mason and I were blown away with all the chief had already done to lay the groundwork for this really important program. She said, and the state coordinator who was on the Zoom call said, St. Clairsville is probably the very best at putting together a program and response. So thank you, chief. You made me very proud. I appreciate that. Thank you to Chief Arbens, Greg Clark, and all the wonderful volunteers who did a short Jimmy Buffett parade around talent on May twenty-fourth. People must have noticed because the next night, May twenty-fifth, we had a very large crowd there to celebrate that first concert. It was so much fun. I thank Eric and the guys from the rec center for turning the amphitheater into Margaritaville for that night. I was proud to be part of the Memorial Day bikers run for the wall. It was very impressive and sobering to see four hundred bikers who are veterans or who riding, were riding in memory of veterans who served. I spoke to one of the veterans at the Polaris Center on Sunday evening when they arrived. He told me he's spoken to so many history classes in high schools, and the kids know nothing about the Vietnam War, which I find appalling. So please make your children aware of the service and sacrifice of these brave souls. The city also received a plaque from them for the bikers who rode for the wall. And the St. Clairsville band, as always, represented us with great pride, and they later honored the veterans at Union Ceremony, or cemetery at a eleven o'clock ceremony that morning. I sat in on a meeting with Jeremy and Jeff Vaughn regarding progress of the water infrastructure project. It sounds like it's going very well. I spoke to the project manager of the interstate project in my yard today, and he said the pipeline is in, it should be installed tomorrow. And I want to say thank you, Jeremy, for seeing this massive project through because that project behind my house, not only is my yard messed up, and that's all right, but the EPA, O dot, and federal red tape were involved in getting that coordinated. That had to be an enormous pain, and I appreciate it coming to conclusion, and I do want all the rocks out of my yard. So, but anyway, that's it. Beth, thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes.
Questions for the mayor? Everybody good? All right, thank you again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Jeremy, it's your turn.
Good evening. Good evening, council. Council items before us, we've, we've talked about the race already, so that's done. We've got four pieces of legislation tonight, twenty twenty-three fifteen, the water rates for the second reading, twenty twenty-three sixteen, sewer rates for the second reading, twenty twenty-three seventeen, a zoning change is the first reading, and twenty twenty-three eighteen, West End distribution bid, and I'm asking for that to be an emergency. Other items that involve council, still working with EPA on the notice of violation for the Dorothy tank, the federal EPA visit, as the mayor mentioned, will, once that comes in. I also have, Donnie gave me just tonight, the fuel consumption for last month, so I have that. I can give that to council if they so wanted. Had sixteen different meetings between now and last meeting, the last council meeting, completed projects, the electric department, the mayor kind of mentioned this in utility, the electrical outage that was scheduled for this weekend. Due to some fortunate weather conditions, no one was actually out of power. We were able to feed the entire city from the East End substation. I want to send a thanks to our guys, Donnie and the crews, because they were up all night working on it and making sure that everyone's good. Street department had a crack fill machine that came in. I don't know if, does anybody know what that is? Basically, when you have an asphalt street, there's cracks that develop in the street because there's not the expansion or contraction joints. Anytime that happens, water gets down in there and degrades the street even further. So to help the street move along further and keep it running, we come in and fill the cracks. They did eleven streets in various areas, areas of the city, sections of Oak Drive and Legion Road, Lexington, North Market, Tudor Drive, E Faw, Taylor Lane, Talbot Avenue, Hickman Avenue, Stewart Avenue, and Glendale Avenue. So they've been busy the last couple of weeks doing that. They also installed new culverts at the intersection of Reservoir Road and Harbell. There wasn't one there before, and we've had problems there, so that's being done. Water note and meter installation, that's a constant thing we're doing. The West End distribution project, Route forty water line was bidded. We have legislation for that. We had five bidders. Low bid was three hundred thirteen thousand thirty-four dollars, and the high bid was six hundred and sixty, six hundred forty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-four. That contractor said they just took the number and doubled it. I said, you did a little bit more than that. But we had budgeted, money budgeted for about three hundred fifty thousand on that. So actually, something came in under budget for once. We've been cleaning out settling basins at the water plant. That's been pretty much done, hauling sludge to the lagoons. We had the water and sewer rate study done. That's down there. Anyone have any questions on it? The I seventy water line crossing, as the mayor mentioned, the liner is on site. They were clearing out the culvert today. They have a back trailer down there, a back truck sucking all the mud out. Going to install the liner tomorrow and then shortly thereafter start on the waterline projects. That's the same contractor doing that that just wanted to bid for the West End distribution. We've talked to them already. As soon as they finish the water lines for I seventy project, they want to roll and start right away on that project too. So keep things moving. Water distribution project, we had our construction meeting, number two. They've worked their way down Spring Park. They're going to come back up and finish the loop and then do a couple of the areas there. They have had the boring company out in various areas of town. We were working with the contractor to get better notification for, for citizens out there. We had a change of plans. We had two areas where they're going to be boring. One, we have not been able to get ahold of the property owner to get permission to go on their property for a construction easement. And then the other one, we need to get another easement, especially for the school. I'm working, I'm going to meet with Dr. Skaggs on Wednesday to go over that. So hopefully, knock on wood, but, you know, we had to do some jumping around, and they actually started in the alley here today. Not going as smooth as they'd like it to be, but they're working on it. Upcoming projects, electric is working on the power lines and pole relocation for the Gitgo. That's the new proposed gas station out the east end of town. I had to remember which way was east. We're still working on easements for the phase one, phase two water project, the easements for the West End distribution project, the bearing for the third screw pump at the water plant, paving. I've got a map basically showing which streets are going to need paved after the distribution project and which ones are going to be paved, and then we're also working on the condition of the other ones. I'm told that the engineer that we hired to do the, the third party street assessment, that that evaluation is going to be done soon. So once we get that, I can share that with council. Working with an engineer on the sinkhole project. That's the big sinkhole. We've got two other sinkholes that it involved too. That's four for this year, if you keep track. We fixed one. The, we're working on the other one, the sinkhole one, the big one is, it's going to be done by engineer. I'm also working with the engineer on a bypass road from Morgan Market. The other sinkhole, there's a sinkhole on Thompson and then one on North Street in front of the elementary school. So that's the one that we started to work on. Route forty water line, we talked about that. Water distribution project, we're continuing to work with the utility office to send out code reds and door hangers. I do want to thank the police for that. They helped out today because we were in a pinch. We had a guy out in the wastewater department and wasn't able to get that out, and our police officer stepped up and took care of that for us. Still working on various building projects, working on the administrative policies and procedures, still working on details for streets, sidewalks, and systems. Working with Trinity on a couple of things, trying to get them moving. We've got Ask Me contract negotiations starting next week, and I've got water tank repair work and cleaning numbers from the one last inspector for all three tanks. So we need to actually sit down and make a determination as, as to what we're going to do and go from there. Department wise, pretty much almost the same, electric, we kind of hit on that, water, still working on that. Water lines, we've had seven water line breaks this year. Four of them were caused by the distribution contractor. And then one, the last one that was out on Walnut and Barton Road. There's a broken valve now that is leaking water, so we're going to have to fix that because it's going to be another month or so. It's leaking pretty bad, so it's going to be another month or so before we get it. And then we found another potential one on Carroll Drive today, too. Then there's the asphalt crack machine, patching puddles when we can find it, street, street repair, culverts, mowing, rec department, the summer concert series going on. Police, the hood is in. We're just waiting for time that we can actually start looking at installing it. I mentioned thanking the officers for the, the door hangers. And then Peter the City, I'm going to steal Tom's thunder real quick here. Tom wrote a grant and got us a five hundred thousand dollar grant for paving for twenty twenty-five for North Sugar Street. So that, I can believe included.
That's awesome.
Catch basins and other things too, didn't they?
Possibly.
Possibly.
Depends on how far the rack goes.
So you can talk, you can talk more about it whenever. I just wanted to tell. All right. Let's go to the city. We're doing good things. And then I want to send a congratulations to Mr. Eric McVay in the wastewater and Mr. Jacob Hendershot. They both passed their wastewater two licenses, which is a pretty big deal. So we have some, some really good crews around. And unfortunately, that's everything. I tried to go as fast as I could.
Which one?
It depends on your, it depends on your perspective.
Questions? Thank you, Jim. Questions?
Welcome.
No? I had one. Sorry, I did have one question. You said the water is sewer rate study. Have we not already seen that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's completed. I think, I do believe that's everything has been completed now because we have the legislation.
Okay.
That was under, yeah, completed projects.
I'm good? All right, thanks again, Chair. Appreciate that. Please, Chief Arbens.
Good evening, council. Monthly report for May, we had four hundred and thirty-three calls for service with four crashes, forty-six arrests, two warrants served, five domestics, and a hundred and nine traffic stops. As the mayor mentioned, we did have a meeting with the A G's office, the A's on Daniel Mason. I also attended a two-day active shooter training in Chillicothe. Three other of our officers will be attending that same class later in the year. And we are scheduling our annual active shooter training for all local departments. Myself and officers, we are deployed and will again be assisting the sheriff's office in that training. And that's all we have.
Questions for Chief Arbens? Thank you, Matt. Any questions? All right, moving along, planning facility. Mr. Murphy, I hear there's a grant out there you know something about.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there was some great news. The city, we did find out this afternoon that we were awarded O docks. It's called the Local Roads Oil and Chale Grant Program. This is for the North Sugar Street pavement rehabilitation project. Grant is for minimum, or five hundred thousand dollars, anything more than that, we would have to, would be a hook for that extended that balance. So that was again, great news there. It's a twenty twenty-five program year project, and it will be an O dot led project. There will be a boards and all the appeals meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh at six P M. Homeowners requesting variance in order to be able to construct a six-foot fence in what's considered their front yard, the property of the corner lot, and all are welcome to attend that meeting. We have been working with the lawn contractor regarding abandoned properties with grass cutting. Four of these properties have been or will be mowed. The city will place a lien on these properties when required. And then the final thing, the orders twenty twenty-three seventeen is a first reading. That's for the proposed rezoning on the West End of St. Clairsville. Does any questions? Feel free to ask them. No?
Does that five hundred thousand have to be spent on North Sugar?
Yes. Yes, yep. It had to be, for this particular grant program, it had to be ideally a local road, which North Sugar is. But there were certain thresholds with the number of trucks that would utilize the road, vehicles, cars utilizing the road, and also in a certain distance of well pads, a certain number of well pads. So really, in St. Clairsville, that was the only street that met those requirements.
That would be around Route forty to the corporation of it?
Yep, right around Belmont, Belmont Drive.
Yeah.
In that area, yep. As long as the money, you know, two years from now, we know what things will cost. That's the ideal goal, is that the entire street be built and paved.
Thank you.
Other questions? I just had one. The variance for the six-foot front yard, what is the address of that?
It's on the corner of Reservoir and Harbell Drive. I think it's two thirty-three or two thirty-five. It's on that north corner.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you again for the work on Grant.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vincento, we're going to do council committees now. You're up first with finance.
Yeah, there's no finance report, but we do have, our next finance meeting will be Tuesday, June twenty.
At what time?
That will be six fifteen.
Okay. There's been some confusion. We're six for a minute, so six fifteen. Beautiful. Anything else on?
No.
Spoiler, anything on utilities? Do you have a report tonight?
Yes, we have a meeting tonight. We went over the billing report. We had a sewer credit request that we approved, and we went over filling Allen Pool and the approving the request for that, which if anyone has any questions, they can contact you.
They can.
And we just wanted to make mention that the utility rates have not been increased since about two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, that it is A E P's transmission costs that are going up, not, not the city charging more for our electric rates. So our customers are going to see an increase in bills, but not because we're leasing rents.
Because A E P is increasing their transmission rates.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Smith's not here, so it takes a while to listen to this street. Northside, not anything else?
No, ma'am.
I got it. The street, the ground, Streets South Side.
No report.
What about safety?
No report.
Okay. So Buildings and Grounds, we did have a meeting on May twenty-fourth. Our next meeting is going to be on July eighteenth, and we covered a lot of what, the service director covered in his report, talking about the distribution system, the West End, that project was out for bid. We've now received those bids. Talked about smoke test letters. So the pretty much the same topics that he just covered. So next meeting, three o'clock, July eighteenth, City Building, for Buildings and Grounds. Any questions about that? Nope? Okay, Planning Commission. Let's go.
I have no report tonight.
You have no report. Thank you for that short report. Any questions for Kristi? And the Fire District, although Ms. Jordan's not with us, I think gave her a report to Kristi.
Yes. She asked me to report that this month's meeting is Wednesday, June seventh. That's this Monday at eight fifteen AM at the firehouse.
This Wednesday, you said Monday? I heard Monday, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. And Recreation, Chris?
Okay. Still kicking is the band that plays at the amphitheater behind the rec center this Thursday from seven to nine. The rec board has asked me as the liaison to council to request that the city donate towards the improvement of the ball field that the Pittsburgh Pirate Grant was awarded. There's a local bank that's contributing sixty thousand dollars. The school is donating twenty thousand dollars. Junior Sports is donating twenty thousand dollars. God bless you.
Thank you.
The grant is for eleven thousand dollars. And we did meet with Junior Sports, who has a lease on that field for certain months of the year. And then the city uses that field for, for ball.
The rec started the fall ball.
Yeah, they started, they started, so. And the property is owned by the city. And these will be improvements to the one ball field, pretty big improvements. So we did request that the city kick in twenty thousand dollars to kind of match what the other organizations are donating. So that's kind of up in the air. The only other thing that was a question is what is the status of the women's restroom stall replacement?
Working on.
And the next meeting, sorry, is June fifteenth at four thirty at the rec center.
I mean, maybe the only, so the only other thing I would add to the request from Junior Sports, we've been with Junior Sports, but then also with the mayor and the service director, who are receptive to helping and are committed to looking at the budget and seeing how, I mean, there's ways that we, we in kind and do things Junior Sports would give. What else can we do? And they're committed to doing it, so I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, Beth kind of went with me and we went to the ball field. We looked at it just so, you know. I asked Junior Sports, a couple of their officers to meet with us just because I'm not very aware of Junior Sports. My kids were band kids. They did not do sports. And I didn't feel that I could ask for money on the rec board's behalf when I really didn't know. So to educate myself, I did, we did sit down and meet with them one morning last week and go and look at the ball field itself and look at some plans. So we, we are going to continue meeting, continue to hopefully sit down with, you know, with Jeremy and Mayor as well as everyone else.
I'm very supportive, but we're going to look at the budget and see. However, I know Jeremy has put a list together of things that the city does do for them already. So we've been really supportive of them and I think he's got that if he wants to see it.
Yeah, well, I mean, he's obviously, I mean, he's still with Junior Sports.
Yeah, well, I helped, he's one of my kids.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I think it's, it's definitely, we all.
On the same team as Donnie, so.
We all want to, you know, Super Authority is committed to continue that conversation. You know, the lease that we have with, between the city and Junior Sports even says there's going to be an annual meeting. So we're looking forward to that in August to really just continue dialogue between the city and Junior Sports. So.
And I should probably also add, you know, the Junior Sports, I went to them. They didn't come to me complaining and they were very complimentary of the city. They do realize that the city has, has done things for the Junior Sports fields. It wasn't like, they weren't complaining, but this project needs to get completed. So they're just looking for some help.
Questions, Mr. Vincentso?
When is the next meeting going to happen?
We do not have a meeting set up yet. The agreement between the city and Junior Sports calls for an annual meeting every August. So we kind of, there's a lot of people involved, but we will nail down a date and time.
In the, in the meeting that Christie was referring to before was just, so as the city's liaison to the rec board, right? So she's in the rec meeting, the rec board, because the city uses, you know, Junior Sports. So we, we have used it much more under Harry than, than ever before. So, so during the rec board meeting, there's conversations about this project to improve this field. And so asking Christie to come to council with the request as the liaison. And she reached out to them to find out more about it. So that was kind of an impromptu meeting, you know. Then to continue that dialogue, right? Is how, how can these two entities continue to work together? So there will be, I mean, I don't know, I want to look for, how formal, but that maybe, you know, the August meeting will need to, how can we get it so more council can be included if interested? You know, so I mean, it's probably a regular meeting, but I don't know.
Maybe invite the council.
Yeah, just it's got to be in a public, open meeting if there's going to be more than four of us attending, so.
So bring in the council meeting.
Maybe, yeah.
One more question?
You can have two or three more, Tom, whatever you need.
What are our plans? Are we into plans or into works of doing a new road going into Junior Sports?
Yes.
And then, and the city be responsible totally for that road?
Yes, well, the city's responsible for the road that goes into Junior Sports now, except for this section of North Market. Wars start falling right about where the bike trail is. And then we go all the way up the field. That's the city's street. City maintains that.
It's a part of its township, or?
The township owns from the Nasty Hill back to, I've heard different things, the cemetery.
But it's half of the street all the way to Rand.
Yeah. So there's, there's a weird situation there as to who owns what.
Did you say half of the street?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's split in half.
Split in the middle, yeah. Because the cemetery's not in the city corporation, right? It's in township. So we're working on it. I have it, but I have not had a chance to meet with the owner yet to see if she's liking what we're proposing. So.
Todd, did you have an M L S?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You always ask.
Can we throw that in on our Building and Grounds Committee?
Say it again.
The Building and Grounds Committee. That's pretty much Building and Grounds. Yeah, I think we talked about it, you know?
Yeah, when we did our tour.
I didn't have, I didn't have any drawings. I just got drawings yesterday. I was talking about the Junior Sports meeting.
Oh, you want to put Junior Sports part of the building, that makes sense.
Because they don't build our grounds.
Yeah, no, I feel like we can cover it in that and then we can invite because, okay, with everybody. Yep. It was kind of a combo rec.
It is.
You know, so we could, we could get it from both sides there. If that makes sense.
I mean, it is.
Yeah.
It is, yeah, absolutely.
You know, and it is rec. We can make it safe, too, J C, you went in on that?
I'll still go to you. We'll make a finance, too, because it's going to cost me money.
There we go, Donnie, you're in. Okay, anything, anything else for Christie on rec? Okay, how about, did we also share a report for the park district?
She did. She said there's nothing to report involving the city, but that J C has inquired about the splash pad. They did run into unforeseen circumstances with that. And this past Thursday, they were informed of even more issues. So the splash pad is delayed again. The next meeting will be Monday, June twelfth, four thirty PM at the Redory Pavilion at Memorial Park.
Okay, thank you for delivering those reports. Okay, so on to ordinances and resolutions. We'll have their, not here, but the chairman explained, there's four pieces of legislation. So two are on second reading. So I'm just going to propose that we do the second reading on those, see if there's any further action, and then we'll come back to the other ones. Okay? So do you want to read twenty twenty-three fifteen?
I do, thank you. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three fifteen, an ordinance amending section nine twenty-five point zero one B to establish water rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
There is no emergency language in that, so that's the second reading. So the next council meeting would be the third and that would be the vote. You want to read twenty twenty-three sixteen, please?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three sixteen, an ordinance amending section nine thirty-three point zero two to establish sewer rates effective at the earliest date determined by law.
And so that serves as the second reading for that ordinance. Okay, so then if we go to ordinance twenty twenty-three seventeen, Tom, that's the zoning one?
Yes.
And that has to do with, we had that public meeting, the last council meetings, and the next thing, the council would vote to get the legislation. So that is the legislation. So it's up for a first reading tonight.
That is correct.
We'll do three readings. There's no emergency language, so are there questions on that one? I should have said, were there questions on the other one that we need the second reading? The, the water and sewer increases. Should I ask that? Everybody's good on this? Okay, so now this one is the zoning that we gave authorization to have ready for this meeting tonight. So any, any discussion on that? Nope? And do you want to read it?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three seventeen, an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of a seventeen point five-six acre parcel of real property, commonly known as four eight one six zero National Road from Office and Institution District, O I, to Commercial District, C one.
So any, anything? We're good? Okay. So then we have one final piece of legislation for tonight. And this is to order the construction bid and we have the bid. And can you just, the light is in an emergency.
Yes, so the contractor can actually start ordering materials because they want to start as soon as they get the I seventy project finished.
Okay.
So that'll take some time to get the materials in.
And if we do an emergency, they need to start doing that tomorrow as opposed to a month and a half.
Yep.
So what do we do now?
Let's read it first time.
Then we'll get to see if people want to do it in the last. Would you read it, please?
I will. Resolution number twenty twenty-three eighteen, a resolution to award construction contract to Border Patrol LLC for the West End Water Distribution System Improvements Project as it was the lowest and best responsive bidder in declaring an emergency.
And that's the three hundred thirteen thousand, that we had, five hundred fifteen thousand. I wonder if anybody's thinking about emergency language, J C?
I'm with it that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended in declaring an emergency.
So you know, we'd like to see a vote on that, right?
No.
We need a second. First, picking Christie, although Donnie had his hands up, too. Christie's the second. And now, now we vote?
Now you can make an emergency.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Seriously? Yes.
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentso?
Yes.
All members are favored.
So now, now we read it?
Again.
Again, and then see vote. So why should say vote? Five people, yes. So we've got enough to go on.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three eighteen, a resolution to award a construction contract to Border Patrol LLC for the West End Water Distribution System Improvements Project as it was the lowest and best responsive bidder in declaring an emergency.
Yes, sir.
J C's making a motion, Tara is second in the motion. So now I think we're going to vote on this.
Butler?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincentso?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you, guys, because that's, that's progress there. Okay, so I'll ask, is, anybody have anything else that, like, would you order anything? We're all good? Okay. So our next meeting is Tuesday, June twentieth. Monday is a holiday, Juneteenth. So we will do Tuesday at seven o'clock here in Council Chamber.
That week, we're also celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of the bike trail.
So, yeah, Captain, did you, everybody got an invitation, I believe?
I believe so, yes, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Did you talk about that in your report, someone else?
No, I didn't. I thought I'd hidden off in there, but you're right. It is a celebration of the bike trail, twenty-five years. There will be all sorts of activities and things associated with that. And we are still talking to some people about maybe bringing a couple of other things, but that'll be a wonderful evening.
Say that the date.
It'll be Wednesday, June twenty-first with a rain date of June twenty-second.
And that's in the evening?
It's the evening at the gazebo, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think it's time for a motion, third chair. Tara? We need a second, J C's the second. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Thank you for attending, for being here.